Hi Heather. We can do a little board. Hey Heather. Can you hear me Heather? Heather, it's gonna be about 10 more minutes.
Yeah.
Heather, can you hear us? You nervous?
Testing one, two, one, two.
You should be very embarrassed now.
Did you need them to be first on the agenda Dan?
Thank you for joining us.
You did?
I'd like to be down with the head honchos down here.
Alright, are we ready to reconvene? I'm sorry we're a little bit late everybody. Alright, we are reconvening. I want to start off in this week before Thanksgiving with a few things about what I'm thankful for and some congratulations as well. I'm very thankful to all of my fellow board members for their commitment this fall and especially this week. This is our third meeting of the week for most of us. For some of us with committee work, there have been many more. I know Michael had, the other day, had like three meetings in one day. It's a very busy time. We had a meeting on the superintendent search on Monday, which I'll talk a little bit more about, but I just wanted to express that. Thanks for all the great work of my fellow board members on behalf of the community. Also some congratulations and I won't steal Dr. Montesano's thunder. I'm sure he'll have a lot more to say about this, but the play that goes wrong, I have not laughed that hard in a long time.
We do need to clap for that.
My face was hurting so much. Thank goodness we had an audit committee meeting on Monday so I could relax those muscles. The congratulations to the boys cross-country team. I know there are many other, some other athletic accomplishments as well. I think there was some recognition of some of the field hockey team members too. But shout out to the boys cross-country state champions. And finally, congratulations to our educators on our number one ranking in the state of New York on proficiency in math in ELA and grades three through eight. So thank you very much for that. I'll say a little word about the superintendent search. We had a meeting on Monday with our search consultants to hear the results of their recruiting efforts this fall and kind of this second wave of our search. And I think we all felt good about the pool that we saw. They recruited not just some national candidates, but some international candidates. So we had a very interesting group of people to review and are feeling very positive as we move forward. What's next on the timeline for the superintendent search is interviews the first weekend of December, another interview the first week of December, and then we're gonna try and find a few more dates to keep the momentum going through our, the closed date of the search, which is in mid-January. And if anyone's interested in more details about that timeline, it is posted on our website. Finally, I wanna, I do want to present the results of the communications survey that we did this fall, but I'm gonna turn it over to Dan if I could to review our audit with our outside auditors, since they are waiting on Zoom.
Sure. We get audited annually by an external auditor. Heather Briggs is with us in the Bonnadeo Group. A draft audit was reviewed in depth with the accountants by the audit committee. And the audit comes with a few manager, management recommendations in the area of tax, search, reserve, grant management, year-end close process, and extracurricular or extra classroom activity, account management. And later on, you'll hear that we are required to file corrective action plans in these areas with the state of New York and the audit committee reviews them as well. So Heather, take it away.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Heather Briggs, I'm the principal on the audit engagement. I'll give you the 50,000-foot view of the audit. The unmodified audit is that we believe, in our opinion, that your financial statements are fairly presented. That is the highest level of opinion you can receive. There's also a government auditing standards report. This speaks to the district's internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations. We don't give an opinion on your internal controls, but we use that information to plan our audit. But if things were to rise to the level of material weakness or significant deficiency, they would be noted there. This year, there is one significant deficiency to note. Just a few financial highlights. This year, the big item is the implementation of GASB-87. That is leases, what we all thought were leases before. The definition changed. GASB now implemented this to make everything a little bit more clear. You'll see you have $1.4 million of leased assets on your books now, along with about a $400,000 lease liability. Your government-wide statements, some big things this year. The ERS and TRS pension liability, that is the liability that you have to record for your portion of the New York State pensions, went from a liability to an asset of about 22 million. And the other post-employment benefits liability, which is the largest liability on your statement of net position, went down about 15 million this year and that's a direct result of an increase in the discount rate. The general fund had an $800,000 surplus this year and you are at your 4%. The extra classroom activities also had their audit. Also, unmodified meeting there as well, as Dan mentioned. There's a separate management letter for your review.
Any questions? Comments? Well, what happens now is we file the audits with the state. We're still working on the single audit for the federal funds. That's got a different timeline. We file the result of the audit with the state and as well as any corrective action plans and move forward and do the same thing next year.
Absolutely. Comes very fast, every year.
Is this a good time to talk about the one weakness that arose in audit?
Sure. It was, we had issues with reconciling, kind of getting into weeds a little bit. We had, we had a new accounting system.
Okay.
And we run all of our fund accounts through one checking account.
Got it.
So there's, there's all kinds of transactions going in and going out. And we had a little issue reconciling that multi-fund account. And our corrective action plan, well, our old financial system used to do it, kind of do it for us. We moved to a new financial system which doesn't do it for us. So we had a little issues in timeliness in reconciling that account at year end. And our corrective action plan is to go back and each fund has its own account. So it'll be readily reconcilable, kind of decentralizing.
Got it. And Heather, will that, will that rectify to your satisfaction and to your firm's satisfaction?
I think it will create a process that's much easier and will simplify it a bit. I think there was a lot of transactions going in and out, in and out. And so I think it'll be a much simpler process, yes.
Okay.
Well, thank you Heather. And we'll see you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you Heather.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Dan, do we need to vote to accept the audit, Dan?
Yes, I need to vote to accept the audit and the forward correction, corrective action plans. File them with the state tomorrow.
Dan, what the corrections were? Do you file those, does the state review those then and then come back to you? Or is there a follow-up on it?
No. The follow-up is next year's audit. If it's still around, you know, that might raise a flag. If you remember last year, we had, there was, there was one issue in the management letter about having employees who were paid out of grants sign off that they acknowledged they're paid out of grants. We filed a correction plan, action, action plan that we will do that. We did that. It wasn't in the audit this year. And I think it was, the other item from the audit last year was, was the tax, search, reserve. We came up with a target level for that. We reduced it, but we didn't get near the target level yet. But we have an old year plan to get it to the target level. So until we're at the target level with that, which should be next, you know, the end of June this year, that should disappear from the report next year.
Yeah, so we're making progress on that.
Yep.
The only other one I think that tends to appear every year, and, and I know this is true in other districts too, is the extra classroom activity fund.
Yes.
So that's where we keep track of. It's like a separate set of financial statements where we keep track of for all the different clubs at the school, the ins and the outs. And some of these are, you know, it's including like the Bronco Barn. So some of this stuff is like cash and...
We don't have, our office doesn't have control over that money.
Yeah.
The theory is the students and the advisors have control over that money because it's, you know, part of the educational process. And if, if, if anything, I think we were cited this year for not having the students and advisors sign off on each transaction, something like that. Which is, which is really not a big deal and nothing we can control. You know, our corrective action plan for that is to say, please, have students and advisors sign off on the transactions.
Yeah, so...
And, and this, that particular comment is pretty much in every school district.
Yeah, and it's not super big money and we're aware of it and we try every year to do better, so...
Any qualitative comments from the audit committee? And on either how they feel about the audit or access to management such that you were getting the information needed to undergo the audit?
I think so. You know, I thought we got all the information. We had, you know, a lot of questions you're asking, we asked during the audit committee meeting and we had access to everyone.
Okay.
One thing I feel good that the audit committee is focused on too is cybersecurity.
Yeah, we're gonna do a cybersecurity audit, you know, penetration testing.
Yeah.
Which is timely again.
Yeah, I mean, there was an article in the Journal today, I think, about a municipality on Long Island that had a problem, so. Feel like we're, we're staying on top of that. Are we ready to vote? So we're, is there a rest?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, accept the audit and accept the fourth financial, I mean, the corrective action plans.
Items A through B.
P. Motion to approve?
All in favor. Thanks Dan.
Thank you.
Alright, I just want to take a few quick minutes to pull the, put the communications survey up on the screen. Review it together. The board all had access to the results of the survey. So we just wanted to share it with the public. I think it's posted with the agenda, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, so everyone can see the results. So let's just go back a few pages, Connie, if we could, to the first page. That's a few pages in.
Right up to the board present remarks right there.
Oh, thanks, I got this too. Okay, so advancing one page. Our first question, just a few questions. As a community member, do you believe you're able to engage with and express your opinion to the Board of Education? About two-thirds of the 191 who responded said yes. I, I think we hope it will be 100% at some point. So everyone should feel like they're able to engage with and express their opinions to us. So it, it does confirm, you know, the need to keep working on making sure there are sufficient outlets of communication, not only outgoing, but back to us. Overall, what is your perspective on the frequency of communications from the Board of Ed? So almost nobody said that we're communicating too often. And it looks like we're split with a little over 40% each saying that our frequency of communication is appropriate or not quite frequent enough. So again, you know, we are, we're working on increasing the frequency of communication by so far doing these little recaps of the board meetings that are a little different from the minutes because they're intended to be kind of in plain English. Well, not that your minutes aren't excellent, but just, just more of a, a little readable recap of the meetings. But also what we're hearing, I think what we're hearing here since, since, you know, nobody's saying that we're communicating too often is that people are looking for quality over quantity. Next question was which, which forms of communication would you like to see the Board of Ed use to communicate, check all that apply? The most popular form seemed to be via email or the summaries of the board meetings, which is what we're already doing. We are also posting those meeting summaries on our website and trying to also just make information easier to find on our Board of Ed website at the district website. And the final question, do you believe you have an adequate understanding of the purpose of the Board of Education and the work that it does? And less than 50% of the respondents indicated that they feel they do have an adequate understanding. So lots of work to do there. One of our board members has been working on trying to pull together what we think are some frequently asked questions about the work of the Board of Ed. At the NPC meeting earlier this week, we talked a little bit about what the principal responsibilities of the Board of Ed are. And what we've seen is we've looked at other websites for other districts is that sometimes there's a kind of a, there's information about the responsibilities of the Board of Ed provided on their own website or almost like a video tutorial. So lots of ideas there. Moving on to the next page, we had about a fourth of the people also provide some comments on the survey. We had a few comments that were not related to communications at all and so that's fine. We welcome communication and about all topics and all forms. Some folks thought we should maybe have some meet and greet opportunities and we've been talking about trying to make that happen, maybe in the spring. A few people again expressed a desire to better understand the basic functioning of the board. Lot of comments about the importance of quality of communications over too much. We all get bombarded with information every day. There were a few requests in the comments about information that we think is already out there, but it's obviously hard to find. The email updates, the board goals, the meeting dates. And I think what it's starting to add up to for us is that we could do a lot of work on our website and to have, you know, a central place where people can go and find all of this information. So we've been, we have been doing some work to this end, looking at other districts' websites. There are a few board members who are very much focused on better communications and have been working with the district's communications consultants. The good news is there's, there aren't too many other districts that are hitting it out of the park with respect to their websites. So I think we have an opportunity to be a leader here. And if we move to the next page, I just wanted to throw up a picture of what our website currently looks like. Believe it or not, that's a lot more information that was there a few months ago. There was really mainly just a link to the board docs site there before, I think. And we really considered board docs our main site. Now, it's still not terribly pretty because what's been happening so far is as we've become aware of people looking for things, we've thrown them up there or asked Brad Ashley to throw them up there, quite frankly. And he's done a terrific job of adding links and adding what we've asked him to add. But we could clearly organize it a little bit better. So it's a work in process. And if you turn to the next page, Connie, there should be one more, a couple more pages, yeah. So the district's communications consultant directed us to Croton's website and that is surely hard to see from the back of the room. But it's just, it's got a series of tabs with things that people have commonly asked about and been looking for, it's just a little bit better organized. And you can see that video in the middle, I think, is a presentation about what the Board of Ed does and for prospective Board of Ed members to learn more about the function of the, of the Board of Ed. So it's, it's an idea, a possibility for, for what our site might look like. So last page, I think, is what are our action steps in process? Other action steps besides the website work. Most meetings are now livestreamed, as everyone knows. That started during COVID, but we also added with the last meeting the capability for those of our TV viewers at home to participate in the public comments section of the meeting. The, the full board has been engaged in producing those email updates that we've been putting out. Those get circulated among the full board for input. As I mentioned, Brad Ashley has very patiently been adding more content to the website as we've asked him to, an archive of those emails, our goals, meeting dates, and also just a single email address if someone has something to say and wishes to communicate it rather than having to pick one of our individual email addresses. It's common on other websites to have one Board of Ed email. As I mentioned, a subcommittee of members have been meeting with the communications consultant. One member is particularly focused on advancing website design improvements. Another Board of Ed member is working on some FAQs and we hope to have some meet and greet events in the spring. So work in process, but just wanted to share the results of that survey and what we're, what we're working with. That, I think, is all I have. So we just need to approve the October 20 minutes, is that right?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve. And I'm sorry, is there, are there any board members that want to add anything to that? I just steamrolled right through it.
No, I think I, just on the communications part, I know was, this came up a lot in the late spring and as, as the new board came together. It takes time to make these changes. We'd like to make them overnight, but they're very much in train. We're trying to be thoughtful about it, not just reactive. So we're happy to hear any input that others have about it. But we would expect hopefully, hopefully by the spring, I would hope that we'll see some more substantial changes to access to this information.
Yep. Anybody else? Okay. Sorry Connie, a motion to approve the October 20th minutes.
Peter?
Second.
All in favor. Motion carries. Dr. Montesano?
Thank you, hi everybody. Thanks for coming out and enduring the audit report. Before I get into too much, I want to introduce our new student rep here Shay Lewis, who's joining us tonight. She'll be doing her report as soon as I finish my stuff. But most of my things tonight are really good news pieces. We have a lot of talented students and staff in our building and some of the things we get to share tonight are the result of all that. I know in the audience, we have the very talented cast members and our talented director, Rob Cross, who are gonna take us through a little snippet of the, of the play in just a couple moments, I'm a little anxious and thanks for staying with us for a little bit. But I'll get you out of here soon, I promise. But before we do that, I just wanted to talk about some other good news pieces because it's really a balance of the academics, the athletics, and our performing arts tonight. And as you heard before, we got nice results in our three through eight tests. Being number one state is kind of nice. We completed our, well, before I can do the fall season, I want Rakia Adams, the principal of the elementary school. You know, I had the pleasure of going down to the National Blue Ribbon Ceremony in Washington last week and I was able to bring back some of the pieces from that ceremony that Rakia is gonna show you that we're gonna be proudly displaying in our school. And the first is a lovely plaque honoring the spirit. And then we have this terrific flag as well indicating our blue ribbon status as a school. If they can figure it out. So that's gonna hang somewhere as well. You know, it's really over several years' worth of work. Rakia was here, Joe McCourous, principal, and Trish Murray before him. So congratulations to the administrators and the staff of the elementary school for, for that distinguished honor and it's really nice to see. On the fall side, we finished our fall season. Just a few of the highlights to let you know what talented athletes we have. Boys varsity soccer league champions, cross-country and the boys, as you know, are league section and state champions. Girls field hockey section champions, girls cross-country league champions. We had a student who finished seventh place in the New York State Championship. Girls tennis were league champions, Victoria McElroy was a state champion. Girls swim and dive, we have Fiona Barr and Kayla Tatarian will swim and dive in the state championship tomorrow and Saturday. So I know it's not all about winning. We had a great participation level as well with all our student athletes. But hats off to the coaches and the student athletes for representing us so well. Really well done. And now, am I gonna turn over to Rob? Rob, I'm gonna turn over to you to talk a little bit about the play that you did that was so successful. And I know we have a little four-minute snippet as well.
I told Rob that if there were a state championship for comedic plays, we'd have won that.
There you go, exactly.
Thank you for having us. We're just, we're very proud of this show. It is the most technically complex, performance-wise complex show, at least I've been a part of here in Rocksville. There were several moments through the process of putting this together where I might have had some doubts. It's, for those of you that didn't see the show, it, just what the title suggests, an amateur drama group putting on a murder mystery, but everything goes wrong. it's an amateur drama group putting on a murder mystery, but everything goes wrong. It starts off really, really bad and then gets worse as it goes on. And by the end of the show, really, the set is falling apart, like actors' lives are quite moving. Which was an issue, I tell you. And it was a really, really big challenge. I read this in Drama Club a couple of years ago, and those that were there laughed. Well, this is wonderful. We could never, ever do this. And then we did. Worse than that, I'll say it again, we're just very proud of what we did. Because comedy is hard. Like, there are, there must be over a thousand discreet jokes, gags, movements where you might not get them right, but if you don't, no one laughs. Like, this is kind of like a video game. Like, you either hit a certain percentage, and that percentage better be close to an A+ basically. We're all going to sell. And I counted all of them. We're shooting every single one, not counting any misses. So, yeah, it has been to the group they wanted to come. I thought maybe one or two would show up. We have all of this crew right here.
Yeah.
Worked so hard. This is nothing I did. This is something that they and all of the crew and the rest of the cast and all of these independent directors, something we did together. And we're so happy for them. And we have a three-minute video or so.
Yeah.
It's often the first act, a lot of it is, there are many, many gags, but you'll see several. There are many more, and I think that there's, there's a full cut.
There is a full cut somewhere, yeah, yeah. Thanks. So Brian, you want to start us off?
What's this? Charles, unconscious?
Sleep, Charlie, sir!
Damn, Perkins, I hope so!
Well, take his pulse! Sir, he's dead!
I'm telling the inspector, Captain. He didn't just come here and sound village. The beer invented, sir. Somebody murdered Charles Laverstam! Thee is dead, man!
What a terrible thing!
This is a lot of stuff, but it was a great special. This was, this is the obvious, deep, ah! He's going to stick it out here, but it's back on my resume, sir. He saw you two together, I can assure you. You have no snap, then you're dead. Now, that's that, I give you all the money, you guys, and shut your mouth, you guys, as soon as you go out. Then who could have killed me? That's a good question.
Oh, it's not, you're giving me a chance!
Now, get, hold on, you're a specter. Now, tell me, is there anyone else that I'm not sure about?
Not so.
We're going about that six million dollar stop, it's Perkins! I've got a thought, I can't help it!
You're going to scratch us in the ground?
No, it's not, I don't think.
Then who could have killed him? Yeah! That's a good question.
Oh, it's not, you're giving me a chance!
Now, get, hold on, you're a specter. Now, tell me, is there anyone else that I'm not sure about?
Not so!
We're going about that six million dollar stop, it's Perkins! No, I don't! Yes! Except for people, what is true, they're gone, all right? It's not us!
Blackout intervention!
Oh, my God, that's so good.
Definitely state championship material, guys. Really well done. She'd be very proud. We're, thanks for sharing that with us and being so good at it as well.
I'll add that I had an 11-year-old, a nine-year-old, and a five-year-old all in stitches. Being top dogs. So well done, Team Wrong.
Yeah. And thanks for coming out tonight, too, and being here so we could celebrate you. I know a lot of work went into it, and we appreciate it very much. Can't wait for the next one. Thank you, Rob. Yes. Let's see. The only other thing is to let you know our seventh graders are doing well down in Williamsburg. They're coming home tomorrow, we hope. But they're having a good time despite their stop along the way and the way down. They had a little issue with the bus driver not feeling well, so they had to stop for a bit of time. But other than that, the trip is going on and doing well, so. That's it for me, so at this point, Shay, you ready?
Yeah.
All right, go for it.
Well, you took a lot of what I was going to say. Thanks.
You can cut them all, right? I saw him take your notes, actually. That's plays right.
I also just wanted to congratulate the play. I also thought it was really good. And the sports recently, they've all just been really good. They've helped commit to quarter one. I think quarter one really shaped our student body. We've had a lot of more student involvement than we've seen in previous years. And I think it's kind of just getting back after COVID. So, I don't know, the sports, the playing, which, again, was really good. I liked it a lot. And I liked the extra credit, too. But as I said, that was quarter one, so quarter one ended November 11th. And I know that was last week, and last week was a very stressful week for both students and staff. We had a lot of projects due, a lot of papers due, and just like a lot of tests and everything. So I think we're all glad to put that behind us. The grades are now out. And we also had our Fall 2022 ceremonial signing for the seniors who committed for sports. And that's a big accomplishment for them. And I think it's also very engaging for us, especially juniors and seniors who realize, like, wow, we're going to college soon. Kind of crazy. And now that it's quarter two, which our sports are starting. I'm on the track team, so we started this week. I know that basketball has had a bit of a preseason, but they started their tryouts all this week. Swimming, as mentioned, is continuing on for the girls who are going to state. And then the boys' swimming has also started, as long, as well as boys' ice hockey has also started. And so for school right now, it's a little stressful on the student end, but like I said, it was nothing like last week. And I think everyone's really looking forward to next week with the two-and-a-half-day week. That's really, really nice. For just some future events for our students, we have the K-D's Run on November 26, which I know me and a bunch of my friends will be participating in. And it's not necessarily a school event, but I know a lot of people from the school get involved, which I think is really, really good and just very engaging. I know that our freshman transition leaders have a freshman transition Thanksgiving activity planned for November 22nd. And just quickly speaking on that, I think freshman transition overall has improved a lot this year. I know for me, it was a lot less, the seniors were a lot less committed, and it was a lot less organized, but this year they really stepped it up. And I've heard a lot of good things about it, so I think that's really exciting. We also have our Knights Boutique toiletry collection, which is an Amazon wishlist. I'm sure many of you saw it. It's a partnership with the Mount Vernon High School, and it's run by two of our Rocksville seniors. And it aims to provide free clothing, school supplies, and toiletries to students in need. So they sent out an Amazon wishlist for each grade, and you can just buy something that will be sent directly to donations, which is really, gets us in the holiday spirit, so that's nice. We have a varsity basketball tournament coming up for both boys and girls. And we also have Holiday Ball-a-Day basketball tournament coming up. That's an SFL-run event. It's a fundraiser, but it's a lot of fun. It brings our students and faculty together. We just do a big three-v-three basketball tournament, and we have faculty involved, especially at halftime. We'll have some, like, faculty one-on-ones. We'll have some half-court shots, some knockout concessions. It'll just be like a fun time for school bonding, but also school learning and money fundraising. And then November 21st, we have the middle school, high school chorus solo recital at 7:00 p.m. So if you can turn out there, that would also be good to support them, to support our musical section. And then we also have the sports awards on the 29th, which will bring a lot of people in. So that's about it. That's been going on with the students recently. Just overall, we've been shifting to more student involvement, especially since COVID. So, yeah.
Thanks, Shay. Well done.
Great job, Shay. Thank you.
I'm done.
Okay. Dr. Kelly, next up?
And if I may, just want to add one more exciting student activity, which was really heartwarming to see on Halloween. The Autism Awareness Club volunteered with our special class students and took them trick-or-treating around the, the school. And when the Autism Awareness Club first sent out the email, like, who would be interested in, you know, being trick-or-treated to, it, the response was overwhelming. Like, there was no way, you know, there wasn't enough time in the day to everyone who wanted to participate. So I think that's a true testament to our high school students and engaging our, our little ones. So thank you for that. We have before you the personnel agenda. First, with certified staff, there's an agreement that the board has reviewed regarding Dr. Montesano. There is a couple of resignations, as well as leaves, and a couple of overages all have been budgeted for. As a result of the leaves, you'll see two revisions to the teacher-mentor list to make sure that those leave replacements are well-mented and have a smooth transition. And they also are before you this evening, the two leave replacements. We have a couple of teacher aide resignations, and we are ready, thanks to Anthony Van Leeuwen and Christine Dow, they are already in the process of interviewing and finding those replacements. We have a substitute teacher recommendation. We do have a revision to the non-union hourly staff, and that is specifically for our bus driver. We haven't had a bus driver in a long time. That rate has not been.
In a decade, it hasn't moved.
That's a long time. So we want to, given that we have a new boss, we want to attract some part-time bus drivers. So I think it does warrant an increase in that hourly rate. And then you'll also see we have a few new coaches for the winter season. When they're initially hired, we have to have these individual resolutions for them. And then they're added to the winter coaches roster, which is before you revise. So there are items A through Q this evening.
Any questions?
Do you think we'll get a bus driver?
It's tough. Yeah, we have one for the weekend, but getting one during the week. We've advertised, we interviewed one guy, he's looking for something more full-time. You know, we just don't have the wherewithal to offer that. And, you know, we're trying to put out some feelers to, you know, the cops and the firemen and, you know, anybody who might have a CDL license and might be interested in part-time work. But nothing bad yet.
I bet the crossing guard Stephanie would do it.
We'll pay for her training. She doesn't have a CDL.
If there's no further questions, can we have a motion to approve items?
A through Q.
A through Q.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. And back to you, Mr. Carlin.
We're at the point now in the year where we've encumbered the contract to payroll by the end of October, and things are looking a little tight on the expenditure side. We're making transfers from any surplus salary and benefit lines to help with some of the inflationary challenges that we're seeing in transportation, energy, and certain other contractual lines in anticipation of shortfalls. I don't anticipate an expenditure deficit for the current year, which is good. But, you know, usually we get a decent-sized surplus. Most of our surplus tends to come from the, from under-spending our budget. I don't think we're going to generate the lion's share of any surplus at the end of the year from that area. The good news is our revenues are looking very good, and there's a couple of reasons for that. We have a few more tuition students than we budgeted, so that line is looking very good. And, you know, after really getting no interest income at all for the last number of years, we budgeted for none this year, and all of a sudden, the Federal Reserve went crazy raising rates. So, you know, we anticipated getting, you know, 10 basis points on our money, and then now we're getting upwards of 3%. So, you know, that's, that's, that's a lot of found money for us, and that will probably make its way into next year's budget as well to give us a little relief on the revenue side.
Am I correct reading that 240,000 in interest income?
Yes.
Okay. That we didn't budget for at all.
Yeah. I think we budgeted for 60,000 the whole year.
60 the whole year.
Yes.
So far this year, wow.
Yeah.
That's fantastic. Okay.
And then I have a few financial action items. A, B, C, D, and E. A is a contract with our field trip nurse. You know, we send a nurse on field trips to dispense medication and if any health issues come up. And then B is declaring our old van, our 2005 van, which did not pass inspection due to kind of rust on the frame, as surplus, so that basically Bosie's can scrap it and give us the money. You know, the, the methodology for that is for the board to declare a surplus, then we can sell it. Or even just get rid of it if it's got no residual value. And then we have the royal coach contract for private out-of-district transportation for the current year. Then we have a contract with an individual for physical therapy services. And finally, a contract with a temporary nurse staffing agency for nursing substitutes.
For the out-of-district transportation, Dan, is the contract estimate consistent with what we budgeted?
Yes, yes, it's actually a little longer.
It's what?
More efficient.
Under?
Yeah. We transfer roughly, or we, we transport roughly 100 kids to out-of-district schools within 15 miles. And depending how that mix works out, and I think the difference is, we had a kid going to Manhattan last year, and we have no, we're not transporting anybody to Manhattan this year. So we're seeing some savings there.
So it's less than we budgeted, and how does it relate to where it was last year?
It's going to come in probably about $40,000 less than last year.
Okay.
And, you know, we can use that money for athletic transportation, because that's, you know, having to go outside to many different outside busing services. You know, that's, our costs are going to go up there.
Okay.
Dan, do we, do we negotiate and market any utility prices for the year? Or are we at the will of the mercy of the market?
We're, we're at the will of the market. Because, you know, we don't. We're at the will of the market, because, you know, we don't, our gas comes from Con Ed, and our electricity comes from the New York Power Authority. And we do get favorable rates compared to, you know, what residents see, things like that. But we're kind of getting hit with electricity especially from two sides. One, are the, you know, the market rates have increased, and we have a lot of AC. So, you know, and we're burning a lot more electricity in September and May and June. So, we'll see adjustments in the budget this year.
I'm guessing this is what you're asking, but are we allowed to hedge those costs as a public school?
We're not really allowed to hedge anything. We're allowed to lock in rates for certain things, you know, for instance, if we, if we're on oil, you know, if we're buying oil to heat our building, we could do a public bid and lock in a rate for oil, something like that. But we're not, we, we're on gas provided by a utility. I mean, we can, we can go to a, you know, an ESCO for production costs for both electricity and gas, but it's really minimal, any kind of savings you'd see. And I think, actually, I think we do that anyway.
Any other questions? So, we need a motion to approve items?
A through Q.
A through E. I'm not seeing A, oh, there's A. A through E.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Not too much going on with facilities. We had a rain incident last week, and everything worked like fun. You know, the pumps kicked on automatically, we never, you know, handled water exactly as it was designed, or not exactly as it was designed, but exactly as we improved the design over the last couple of years. So, worked flawlessly, and thank you to the village for cleaning out the store water pipes. We think that, that's part of the issue, you got, you know, vigilant, the village, and they recognize this, have to be vigilant in keeping those clean. You know, someday, that would be a good project for a student is inventorying what they pull out of those lines.
A sensitive elective.
Whatever, does it make it to the Bronx River Project?
And we filed our letter of intent with the State Education Department for the outdoor classrooms, you know, that are being funded by the donations. So, those are gonna kick off.
Oh, so we don't have to do those as part of the big five year?
No, no. That's a separate funding foundation, PTA.
Oh, right, okay, great, so those will move along quickly.
Yep. And no facilities action.
Yeah, I can't help thinking every time I walk by those pumps, though, too, if we can just even get, like, one of those tacky, like, garage things spilt over them, keep the debris out. That would be great to prioritize anyway.
That's a tacky garage thing. The neighbor's name is like a tacky garage thing.
Have you seen that with one of your neighbors, even?
But, you know, we think the fake ID made a little bit of a difference, getting it surrendered on three sides, but...
Yeah. Fake ID roof? Almost a fake ID. Like a hysteria thing.
Write that down, too, Dan.
We're stereo, the stereo.
There's something to this.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe we can...
No, you know, we run into the problem of building an enclosure in that, you know, when these things are running, they're pumping diesel fumes all over the place. And there's a person in there, when all five are running, Mike Lee is in there himself. And we want to keep Mike Lee alive.
Yeah, we definitely want to keep him alive.
Even on the poor side, is that the problem?
You know, we could look into building a, you know, a larger pavilion over it, but I think that, it would have to be a really large pavilion over it, that would be intrusive in its own right.
Right.
You probably have to make it movable, so in case you ever had to fix the pump, get a machine in there to lift it up, the crane's gotta be able to get in there.
Yeah. The design specs do call for a roof, though.
I sense a new elective. Builder, engineer.
I believe the design specs...
The original design specs.
Protection from...
At least maybe you can get a website built in there for us.
We will look into it.
I think it is worth looking into.
Yep.
If you want them to last as long as the designs will last, so it's possible to do that.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
I think that's a wrap, right, Connie?
Right.
Then there's a wrap. So, are there no other action items? Committee reports? Are there any committee reports?
Well, we had the audit, but we basically went through it again.
Yeah. Okay. So, return to our public comments section. There's anyone present who wishes to make a comment? We also, I believe, somewhere have a link to...
Questions.
Anyone who may wish to submit questions who's watching remotely, and I'm looking for that.
Nothing's coming.
Okay. Is there anyone present who'd like to speak? Okay, no one, and you have one question?
No, nothing.
Okay.
Can I ask one follow-up with Dan regarding the facility?
Sure.
This probably happened at some point before me getting on the board, but have we done a building-wide energy efficiency review to make sure that we're doing everything possible to, you know, do our part?
We have, what we have done in the past is, you know, I've brought consultants in to talk about, you know, solar. Yeah, I think we're probably not a good candidate for wind turbines, you know, they don't want lights on the field, they probably don't want windmills on the roof.
Yeah.
But solar, our issue is we don't have room up on, you know, the roof is still packed with utilities up there, between air conditioning, condensers, and boilers. The only space we really have is the space above the gym, which is, if you remember up there, it's kind of set down, which would limit light being able to get to it. You know, I think, although we haven't done a study, we know we could get more efficient windows. You know, that's on a five-year plan.
We could do lighting, Dan, right?
Yeah, and we've done lighting in the past, we, you know, everything's basically LED now in the building. We spent a lot on lighting a couple of years ago, changing to all LED.
Windows are due to be replaced at some point in the near future, so that'll be a big one.
And the only thing that would work solar-wise, you know, I see this when I go visit my daughter in Tucson, you know, they have, the parking lots are all covered just to keep the cars in the shade. And then they have solar panels on top of those. I mean, the only room we would have to put them is something like that in the parking lot. You know, who wants to look at that? So, that's, you know, another limitation of being on our, you know, one square block in one square mile. But we're open to anything, you know, we'll talk to anybody. Because utilities are increasing lineup, just because of the way the market is, absolutely.
I was at my daughter's college, and they're doing geothermal. If the whole college is gonna go that direction over the next couple of years, I have no idea if that's something that would be, I don't even, I don't know anything about it, but just now they mentioned it.
We got that area between Hayes Field and the parking lot.
Well, it's basically, it's, my understanding is it's a lot of drilling.
Yeah.
Drilling down, it's not...
Does the school own that rock, like, the rest of the town?
No, the school's on...
It's a swamp.
Well, that's the other thing, isn't it, how far do you drill down to get it?
Yeah, you know, I'd be more than happy to talk to a geothermal consultant or...
Well, you've got a lot of federal, you've got a lot of federal money out there, I'm sure. I'm sure if it was doable, they would, you could find pots of money that they'd pay for it, I just have no idea.
I think that's a good point, Michael. I wonder if just a general energy consultant is worth having a conversation with?
I'll look for one.
Maybe Land has somebody that they work with?
Yeah.
Yep.
And we are not seeing any questions from the TV audience nor here in person, so...
You gotta use your gavel, too.
You gotta reserve that for when you really need it.
When you really need it.
So, we'll have a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.